Good evening. We'll now call the meeting to order. Would you please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda? That's Dave and Sarah. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we will have our principals' report from Mr. Edward Foot, Thornell Road Elementary. Good evening.
Well, thank you for having me again this year. I appreciate coming back, first of all. I'm excited to be able to brag about our school as always, and it was great to see the board for our board visit this month, so hope to highlight some of that work that you saw around the hallways. We focus on our Thornell Road family. You'll hear "family" a lot in our halls, and that's a picture, our current family picture we take every opening day. And I have to tell you, we've had probably the best opening of schools that I've had in my time as an administrator. It's about 11 openings so far. It just was a wonderful start to the year at Thornell. I wanted to highlight before I begin, I know it was last year, but that was my first graduate walk with all the Menden grads back. What a special event that was. And as a former Menden grad myself, it was so great to see basically adults get on the playground and take that picture, and so I thought that'd be kind of fun for you to see. But what a special time, and that sort of just brought that whole family feel to the end of the year together for me, so I wanted to highlight that. I've just framed tonight's quick presentation around our mission statement of teamwork, respect, and excellence for our students again this year. We'll start with teamwork. A lot of this is thank yous, but it is updates. We had such a great opening, and that was in part to our main office. And one of my goals is that Thornell feels like a welcoming environment for our students and our families, but also to all of you, our district office staff. That's our picture of our three office staff and Mackenzie from our technology department. And so just including everybody in our school is a big priority of mine, so I want to express that they've all been essential. Our transportation department really worked closely with us on our kindergarten orientation. So one of my highlights so far is that middle picture, if you can see there. We did our kindergarten orientation a little bit different. We had the parents join the students on the bus this year. So for some of them, they said, "It's been 30 years since I've been on a school bus." And so I said, "Get up there," you know? And so they rode it, and what a wonderful time. And that was a change from previous years, so thanks to Carla and all the staff at transportation for welcoming that idea. And I think it just alleviated anxiety in our kids. We had some kids go, "I wasn't going to ride the bus, but I think I want to." And it just kind of brought that feeling that we were hoping for. And then our kindergarten team was phenomenal, just to welcome families before school was starting, including some of our bus safety drills that the kids did so well. So as other teamwork, you see our Board of Ed, the artwork is from Thornell this month. The DOT project, Helga Lubers and our art staff have highlighted curriculum project, aligning it kindergarten for second, for third, fourth, and fifth. So even though it's the same project, a different theme by different grade level with a different point of view. So that connectedness is really a part of our special areas. On the left is, again, an example of the wonderful library instruction from Jenna Ottavino and Makerspace. So integrating library standards with technology, just the teamwork there is phenomenal. This is from our real focus of our teamwork of our staff this year is our strategic initiative. We had a fantastic conference day just a week or so ago. In all honesty, those middle pictures are of Valentine's last year because I couldn't find staff working together because I didn't take a single picture. We were so focused on the work, talking curriculum, which is, you know, after our first year was really the first deep time to talk about that, that I didn't take a single picture, which is very unlike me, not to take photos of kids and staff. The right and the left is our work, I swear. Those are actual posters from our deep dive into the vocabulary development. But we had just a great time to talk about kids, talk about learning, and have all of our staff, including our paraprofessionals, which was huge, working together, common understanding, and then moving forward. So I thought it was a great kickoff as far as our teamwork. Respect, you guys have heard our partnership, one of the strongest elements, I think, at Thornell Road is our partnership with our local veterans, with our Jewish Federation, and obviously, none the more important, our school-to-school partnership with the SEAF and just showing support from one school to another over the past couple of weeks. So just they continue to do well. We're a hub for Honor Flight, and so, you know, I had some of my friends who I coached their daughters giving me envelopes, saying, "Oh, you're the hub at Thornell. Could you deliver these?" You know? And just that community connection felt really great this fall. Curriculum connections, this was from the end of last year, honoring a writing project that students did with veterans and another writing project that will honor kids this Friday. One of our fourth grade classes, Tony Stevens Oliver's class, won first place in, again, for research, so they're back-to-back winners, and we'll be honoring those kids this Friday. So really nice connections to the curriculum and support from our community as well. As far as excellence goes, that's the book that we'll be honoring on the left, and it's called Six Miles on the Erie Canal. They took six members that are buried in the Pittsburgh Cemetery and studied their history and their contribution to the area and the canal using for sources, and then published that book. And that's the book that won this year for the New York State Archives Association, and that was their picture from last year. So we'll take another one of those this Friday. We again did our summer reading program, which had even more kids involved than last year. The total minutes there, bested, I think, last year, 190,000 minutes. And to see the participation from kindergartners all the way up, those are our grade level picks and how excited they were to come back from the summer and how many minutes they read, just that focus on literacy is always so great, and our kids are just amazing. Best state test results I've seen at a school, so that was pretty cool to see, too, as a side note. So thank you to our librarian, Ms. Ottavino, and our Mr. Mesh, our EA in there, and then our reading teachers for organizing that again. One part I did want to highlight, I think we've broadcast this enough, but one of our paraprofessionals, Ms. Barb Kane, pictured on the left, she was recognized with a golden apple after three days of school. And so that seems quick, but when you hear her story, you're like, "That makes sense." She's 40 years as an OB-GYN nurse and in healthcare, and decided to do a second career after that time, and has been with us since 2015, working with kids as an EA. And then their story of working with a student, great piece from News 8, and highlighted that. But the real reason I also wanted to showcase this is just that paraprofessional group. I have been so impressed about how they are working with our kids and the level of service out of our paraprofessionals, and again, including them in our conference day, and the work that our one-on-ones doing has just been a highlight of the start of the year. I think we've had our best start because those kids feel so settled and supported, and we're moving right into the school year. So it's been just a great source of teamwork and excellence by that group. I just wanted to highlight them as a whole. Thank you for all of your support. I know I've been instructed, you know, keep this nice and brief and show cute pictures of kids, and it's a winning formula, so.
Who told you to keep it brief?
I think it was nobody, just guests. So thank you again for all your support. Thank you for coming to all of our events. I have never seen as many people come to everything we do, as much as all of you do, and it makes a difference. Our teachers, after the visit, just couldn't get over how many people came and the conversations they had. I hope you felt the same way, you know, when you talked to our staff, too. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to field those, but it's just been a great start at Thornell. Happy to be here.
Thank you.
You good?
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Have a great night.
Next, we will have an approval of our minutes from September 12, 2023. That would be Kim and Jeff. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. And next, we'll have board recognition. Please, you're welcome to come forward and speak.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Hoffman. I am the newest president of Pittsburgh Educational Office Professionals. So I'm here on behalf of our association this evening. The members of the Pittsburgh Educational Office Professional Association recognize the significance of the duties and responsibilities assumed by the Pittsburgh Schools Board of Education members. In grateful recognition of the dedicated service that the Board of Education members provide to all of us in the Pittsburgh community, the Pittsburgh Educational Office Professionals has donated $100 in your honor in support of Pittsburgh Youth Services. We acknowledge and appreciate the commitment and contribution of each member on the Pittsburgh Board of Education, and we greatly appreciate your support. So thank you. And I'd like to present Ms. Scott.
Thank you so much, Carrie.
I'm like a fangirl right now. I'm so happy to see all of you, but my heart's beating a mile a minute, so I'm a little nervous. Good evening. It is really a pleasure to be standing here today. I got to do it last year, so I got to do it twice, so this is exciting. Good luck, Kristen, for next year. On behalf of Pittsburgh Central PTSA, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each of the seven Pittsburgh community members who are serving on our Board of Education. As I thought of ways to thank you for your service and your commitment to our students, I came across this quote, which I actually shared in our e-news. It says, "Public schools are the bedrock of our communities and our country. Democracy thrives with educated citizens capable of critical thinking and civil discourse. And it is our local school boards who are ultimately responsible for student success." And I was like, hmm, yeah, easy, no problem, right? No pressure, right? So for the countless hours you spend listening, learning, engaging with members of our community to best meet the needs of our students, thank you for your partnership with PTSA. As we work together to build a strong community and support all students and families and schools, thank you. For the pride and uncompromising drive for excellence that you expect in Pittsburgh, thank you. And most important, for the courage and dedication you exemplify in this role, thank you so much. You do this all with grace and with great respect for the enormous and important task at hand. In your honor, Pittsburgh Central PTSA has made a donation to the Pittsburgh Education Foundation, and I hope you enjoy your week of recognition.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Stephanie Worschel from the Pittsburgh District Teachers Association. I'm one of the vice presidents. I'm here representing the nearly 800 members of PDTA. We want to express our heartfelt gratitude and say thank you for supporting what we do as educators. We are in awe of the countless hours you dedicate to this volunteer position from all of us within, for all of us within PCSD and the Pittsburgh community. The commitment you have made to collaborating with our organization through our recent round of contract negotiations, with advocacy and action for safety and security, and even during casual encounters while on building visits, all of that is to the utmost importance to us. To show our appreciation, members of the representative assembly have written personalized messages in the card at your seat. And PDTA has also made a donation in your honor to both the Pittsburgh Education Foundation and to Pittsburgh Youth Services. Thank you so much for all you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Hi, I'm Scott Barker, Pittsburgh District Administrative Association president. And yes, I did retire from my job, but still holding this position. And I'm glad to be here. So I appreciate the time that the board has given us. And first, I just want to say thank you. I'm not sure if the students in attendance know this, but everybody that is sitting here as a board member, they do this in a volunteer basis. And the hours that you put in for our school district, I'm not sure if "thank you" is strong enough, but we really do appreciate it. When I was thinking of your work, the term that came across for me was servant leadership. And when you define servant leadership, it says that people who are focused on the growth and well-being of its employees and other stakeholders in their organization, servant leaders seek to help the people they serve grow as individuals. And we all got into this business to help our students grow, and you all do that on a day-to-day basis. You model servant leadership in our community and schools, and we thank you. In recognition of all your work and a show of our appreciation, PDAA has made a monetary donation to the Pittsburgh Student Opportunity Fund, and on behalf of our 23 members, thank you for all you do for our schools and our community to make the absolute best.
Thank you so much.
Okay, what they all said. I don't know what I can add. I'm Barb Shapiro. I'm here tonight representing all of the hundreds and hundreds of retirees of the school district, including our support staff, our administrative staff, our professional staff. And I come to you tonight to thank you. Every day should be Board Recognition Day. That's what my mother used to say, every day should be Mother's Day, but it's true. We are so proud to have spent our careers in Pittsburgh, and we continue to be very grateful for the support you show us even into our retirement. We know how committed and dedicated you are to the students, the families, the staff, the in-service staff, and the retired staff, and we very much appreciate it. A school district as Pittsburgh that is so successful and is a model for the excellence of its students and the learning of its students can only be that way if it has good leadership in its Board of Education. And we've been very blessed to have you as very, very committed leaders. We're thankful for it, and we continue to stand by you, and if there's ever anything we can do to assist, we're here to help you. Thank you. And we did not make a monetary donation. We gave you cookies, but maybe next year we will. You've got to have something sweet. Thank you again.
Thank you. We appreciate you. All right. At this time, we appreciate all of you. Thank you so much for your thoughtful remarks. We appreciate that. Next, we will have our Board of Education reports. And so in representing our community, we attend several Monroe County School Boards Association meetings. And our board leadership, our next meeting is November 8th. We will be represented there. Executive Committee is forthcoming. Information Exchange Committee, our next meeting is the 8th. Emily will be in attendance there. Labor Relations Committee, our next meeting coming soon. Legislative Committee, Sarah is our committee co-chair of Monroe County School Boards Legislative Committee. And also, Sarah spoke and presented at our Executive Committee meeting. She gave wonderful information. We appreciate her advocacy on behalf of all of us in Monroe County School Boards and at our district. We're so lucky to have Sarah in that role. And next, Steering Committee, next meeting, which Sarah is also a part of that. Dates to remember coming up, we have. Yes, sir. Okay. Oh, yes. Audit Oversight Committee meeting. We were in attendance at that, and our chair was selected, Renee Kozakos was there.
And Mike can do all.
And Mike will do a follow-up when we get to the financial reports. Okay, thank you. Other dates to remember are Board of Education visits, tour at Allen Creek. Our schools will be closed for Veterans Day on November 10. On November 22nd through 24, we're closed for Thanksgiving recess, and November 28 is our next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay. So next, we will have financial reporting and any updates from Mr. Vespe.
Okay, thank you very much for your consideration. First is the Acceptance of the Treasurers Report. This is always, you know, in conjunction with the audit, so you can see that June 30th report is just the year close. We don't have a lot of activity in the summer months in terms of revenue and obviously expenses until back to school, so very little to report. We, you know, we got some standard summer state aid payments, and, you know, again, you're seeing an uptick in interest earnings. You're going to hear me say that, you know, with the interest rate environment that we're in, that continues to look favorable. And then the second quarter sales tax from Monroe County at 1.8 million, which was in line with expectations for the period. And then a slight receivable for the August excess cost. Really nothing to report on the expense side, and, you know, no update on food service until we really get into the first operational month.
Thank you, Mr. Vespe. We have several action items, and the first one will be an acceptance of our Treasurers' reports for June, July, August 2023. May I have a motion? Emily, and a second from Dave. All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will have our fourth quarterly extra classroom activities report that you reviewed in your board packets. May I have a motion to accept that? Jeff and Kim? Are there any comments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll have External Audit Report and Management Letter Resolution.
Again, for your consideration is that, you know, the annual audit report, this is typically when it's approved by SED guidelines in October. That audit took place over the summer. Audit, the Audit Oversight Committee met on October 6th, or 4th. Tom Zuber, the district's main auditor, gave an unqualified opinion, which means there's no concerns with the audit whatsoever. You know, we kind of kidded around a little bit about the Treasurers' reports, you know, that we talk about each month. No surprises. Additional sales tax, interest earnings, and state aid from BOSI's drove revenues. The use of federal stimulus funds helped to offset some of the expenses, so the district performed very well overall. You know, the challenge that we spoke about, again, and this will be a recurring theme, is this current year is the last year for federal stimulus funds. So, you know, that'll be part of the budget discussion. In addition, just in terms of big buckets, as you recall, last year, the district was authorized to spend $14 million from capital reserves. You know, that's voter authorized, voter approved, voter authorized, as well as Board of Education approved and authorized. So we had some of the funds to offset and replenish the capital reserve, but overall our fund balance decreased by 6.4 million. So if you think we spent 14 and offset by 6.4, that's still a very positive performance. So it'll be important to replenish those reserves. I think we, you know, had a great start to that at the end of last year's fiscal year. We had one finding regarding W-2s, and that finding is part of the response letter that has to be approved separately for state education purposes, so that covers the next agenda item. And, you know, this is something in terms of process that, you know, we do on an annual basis for the board to approve both the audit and the corrective action plan. The Claims Auditor Review to Report as well, there were no significant findings, and I'm pleased to report on the Superintendent's Conference Day that we did district-wide training, and I think a number of people were very complimentary about that training. So I hope that's going to reduce, you know, maybe some of the infractions that the Claims Auditor takes care of in terms of that process prior to approval. So we were very happy about, you know, being able to offer that training. The administration reviewed potential increases and tax exemption limits for seniors. That requires board action, so we're going to wait and see what happens at the town level, and we may be bringing that as a future agenda item. So we talked about that, what that means, so I just want to give the full board heads up. And then finally, from a fiduciary responsibility standpoint, and I do this as well, during the budget review process, we reviewed reserve funds. So it's important always to note that on the Board of Education minutes as part of our report out, that we reviewed them at committee, and then we'll also follow up during budget. And our next meeting is scheduled for December 6th. That concludes the report.
Thank you. So there are numerous action items. We will begin with the External Audit Report and Management Letter Resolution. Is there a motion to accept that? Sarah and Kim, thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? The motion carries. Next, we'll have the Pittsburgh External Audit Report Response. Is there a motion to accept that? Jeff, Sarah, questions? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, there's action on installation of cameras on school bus stop arms resolution.
So, yeah, for your consideration, this is a neat item. This is new from Monroe County. This was passed a year ago. You may have heard or saw the press release on it. There's currently three other school districts that are participating. I anticipate more, you know, will sign up for the program. There's no cost to the district. It's funded, you know, from whatever fines that are anticipated. I think it will, you know, make our bus routes safer because there's now a consequence where you're captured on camera. So that's the whole premise behind it. As soon as we resolve what happens if we take the cameras off the bus, we plan on moving forward with this, but we need a Board of Education approval prior to, you know, that stuff. So appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. So is there a motion to accept this? Jeff and Emily, are there any questions for Mr. Vespe?
I did just have a quick question. Part of the service is that they monitor those cameras, too?
Yeah. They, the data goes directly to them, so we don't have, we're not, we don't have any part of it. So it'll just be more or less, the communication goes directly to whoever violates it. We don't, administratively, we don't get involved. We're not going to handle complaints. It goes, you know, it's just, we're just the, you know, the, really the means of the camera monitoring per se for the program.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Vespe.
Okay, next, for your consideration, is the adoption of the budget calendar. So it's hard to believe that the budget process starts now, but here we are. And officially, it starts with the release of the documentation, all the budget originators on November 1st. So because of the timing, you know, we're going to review it and ask for approval tonight for the actual calendar itself.
You saw the budget formulation dates in your packets. So is there a motion to accept the calendar as presented? Sarah and Kim, second. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? No motion carries. Thank you.
And next, for your consideration, is the Declaration of Scrap Equipment as provided to you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the Declaration of Scrap Equipment? Emily and Dave, thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. So the bid awards will be seen on the, will be a part of the consent agenda. Thank you so much, Mr. Vespe. Next, we'll have our Human Resources Report for Mr. Clark.
Thank you. Good evening. First, for your consideration, is our Professional Staff Report. We have three certified staff appointments, 16 school-related professional appointments, three teacher fellow appointments, three school-related professional resignations, one auxiliary resignation for retirement, two school-related professional resignations for retirement. We have revised fall coaching salaries, and we have winter coaching salaries and volunteers for your approval.
May I have a motion to accept the Professional Staff Report? Kim and Sarah, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Clark? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Clark?
All right, thank you. And next, for your consideration, is the Support Staff Report. We have three clerical appointments, four clerical resignations, one summer helper resignation, one transportation resignation for retirement, one transportation termination, four custodial appointments, three custodial resignations, one food service appointment, and three food service terminations.
Is there a motion to accept the Support Staff Report? Dave, second, from Emily. Are there any questions? All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, for your consideration, we have memorandum of agreement under the consent agenda.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a curriculum report from Mrs. Ward. Next, we'll have a curriculum report from Mrs. Ward.
Thank you, thank you for having me here tonight. This is the, my annual opportunity to share with you the results of our three through eight ELA math and science assessment program. And I just need to start by giving enormous thanks and shout out to Jeff Kimmer and the folks in the data team office who really are very much responsible for pulling this information together and making me look good when I stand up here in front of you to share this information. So thank you for that. There is also, I probably don't need to point this out to you. No, there's a tremendous amount of backup in your board packet. I'm really distilling the presentation down to really the big highlights and the essentials, but certainly you have a lot of information, a lot of additional data and charts and graphs in your packet. So at any time, if you have any questions about anything in there, please feel free to ask away. So typical process as usual, although this year the scores were received a little bit later, which was a little bit puzzling since so much of the testing has now gone to computer-based. We were all hopeful that that would mean scores would be turned around a little more quickly. But instead of coming to us in August, we received them from the state in September. We then take that information and we work with building administrators and district administrators to look at the data at a build, at a district level, building level, and then at the building level, they also look at the data at the individual student, student level so that we can use that data to help drive decisions about students who need additional AIS supports, as well as I work with the data with our standards leaders to look at any implications for district curriculum and assessments. You know, just at a very, very high level, you can see how our students did this year. The science four assessment was not held this year. This past spring, it is, we're in a transition point. So this school year we're in now will be the first year that the elementary science assessment is given in fifth grade. So our current fifth graders who were fourth graders last year did not have to take a science test last year. They will take the new state science, science test this school year. Some things that are really important to point out before we get into the data itself is, really has to do with the fact that we've had significant changes to the data and the assessments themselves over the last several years. So you may remember 2019, 2020, all state assessments were canceled because of COVID. We were all working from home at that point of the year. In the 2021 year, that was the year we referred to here as a temporary learning model year. So we had kids in hybrid and remote. And the state significantly modified the assessments that year. They took what are typically two-day assessments, two parts, and they distilled them down into one-day assessments. And they really very much gave lots of room for choice around whether to take it or not. Our students who were learning fully remote that year were offered the opportunity to come in to take the state test if they chose to do so. But the vast majority of them, of course, did not. And so we don't even share results from that year as we look longitudinally because it was a completely different kind of testing environment. 2122, we went back to the pre-COVID format of the test. They were two-day tests now. The science test went back to a written test and a performance lab assessment. And so you'd think, well, great, we're back on track. But then this last, past school year finally was the first year that the state altered the content of the assessments to be aligned with the next generation ELA and math assess, uh, standards. Previously, we had been aligned with the common core standards. The, the rollout of the assessments aligned with the next gen standards was delayed due to all of this COVID break. But, um, so you have at least these four years where it's very difficult to make any, any real solid conclusions when we look at the data longitudinally. And I say all that knowing that I'm about to show you some slides that look at the data longitudinally. But we really need to keep in mind that there's, um, there's a faultiness to trying to draw a lot of conclusions from those year-over-year comparisons. Also important to note that we are moving into the computer-based testing environment. So this past school year, we in Pittsburgh did computer-based testing for all of our students' grades three through eight for the ELA test. And all of our students' grades five through eight took their math assessment on, in the computer-based format. Going into this school year, we made the decision to move everything to computer-based testing. So all ELA and math grades three through eight will be computer-based. The science tests, which will be brand-new this year, the state is not even giving us an option of paper-based tests for those, a science, for those science assessments this year. They will be completely computer-based. The lab portion of those assessments will no longer be part of the testing experience. There are now four required lab experiences that all students need to have as part of their instructional program prior to taking the state test at their grade level. So it's a very different look for science going into this year. So again, changes are being, are being made. So with all of that reason for not looking longitudinally, here's the longitudinal look at our performance in ELA. It is, you know, it, it is always an interesting peak edit. You can see we pull the 21 data right out because of the one-day test that we're given there. And I will say, and when we look at this slide for math as well, where you see for our students, some peaks and valleys and ups and downs. If you look in your packet at the three-year comparisons across the county, you'll see very similar patterns across the county in terms of the ups and downs. So where you see some of our scores going up this year, that was a very similar pattern across the county where our scores went down. Again, very similar across the county, which says to me that those ups and downs have more to do with the test construct and the test, the difficulty level of the questions than anything particular about instruction or particular cohorts of kids. Clearly, the, the differences are different in every district, but the patterns fall out in a very, very similar way. The three-through-eight assessments, every student does get a score on a one-to-four scale with level four being considered a mastery level. Threes and fours are proficient in mastery. So we're always striving to make sure that kids are scoring at least a three on the assessments. It is always kind of pleasing to my eye to see the four, the percentages of students who are hitting mastery on these assessments being a fairly significant chunk of the test takers. Those are kids who are demonstrating mastery on their grade level standards. And so we can see that across all six of the ELA assessments. And then when we look at the county data, again, this is ELA, grades three through five. Pittsburgh's performance is represented by the blue bar on each of the graphs. And then the other districts on the east side of Monroe County are represented by the other bars. We do take the names off because this is their data to share with their communities at this point and not ours necessarily. But again, we can see that our students do very well in comparison to students around the county on all of our ELA assessments. And then similarly, when we look at math, again, the peaks and valleys are similar to what we see across the, across the county looking at the longitudinal data. And again, we have nice proportionality in terms of the percent of students actually achieving mastery on these math assessments in most of the grade levels. Always important as a reminder when we look at the grade eight math that that represents a much smaller proportion of our students. Students who take algebra in eighth grade do not have to sit for the Math 8 state assessment. They take the Algebra Regents exam instead and that qualifies for their required state and federal math assessment at that grade level. So then again, we see the math results on grades three through five in a countywide comparison. Again, very strong showing across all of those assessments. Really nice to see how well our kids continue to do. Science, again, there was no fourth grade science assessment given this year. So you see no gray bar there for fourth grade. Eighth grade science, we did experience a little bit of a dip in performance there. You can see that year-over-year. And again, the eighth graders who take earth science do not take the Science 8 test. So this represents about 50% of our eighth graders are eligible to take this Science 8 exam. And then you see how our Science 8 results stacked up against the county, for the east side of Monroe County anyway. And then we continue to track our refusal rates and we see the similar patterns year-over-year now, pretty consistent story. Small percentages of students in the elementary grades, still having parents choose to not have their child take the test. And as you increase in the grade levels, your percent of students who are opting out of the test increases. I think there's a, a social pressure piece that goes into place there. There's, you know, lots of different reasons why families choose not to have their children take the test. That certainly, we've put that in the family's hands at this point. It becomes a, a missing piece of information about a student, but it's just one piece of information. And we have lots of other ways to understand who our students are as learners that we value as much, if not more, than their performance on the state assessment. And those are our science rates as well. So as always, we take all of this data that you're seeing in a very high-level aggregate sort of storytelling here and we break every one of those test results down by the subgroups that we are required to report at the state and national level. That subgroup breakdown, some of that is in your packet. We also take a look at it at the central office team level. I share it with the district leaders, district administrators, standards leaders. And we really have some really good conversations about what the data is telling us, how our subgroups are performing and what kinds of interventions we need to be putting in place in order to close some gaps that we continue to see in some of our subgroups. We certainly use the data to help us target some professional learning for our staff. And of course, we use it always to inform curriculum and assessment development as well as acquisition of resources to make sure that we are putting the best instruction in front of our students to allow them to achieve proficiency, if not mastery, on each of these assessments. And with that, if you have any questions or are looking for any additional information, I, please let me know.
Melanie, if you, just really quick, the board had a question that you answered relative to Math 8. Can you just put some perspective around those numbers there?
Yeah, so it was about the refusal rate?
About the whole population that can, that, that actually takes the.
Right, so, um, again, if a student is taking algebra in eighth grade, they do not sit for the Math 8 test. They're not required to sit for the Math 8 test. About half of our eighth graders take algebra. So they're taken right off the top in terms of looking at students who would sit for the Math 8 test. So when you take the number of students who are actually expected to sit for the Math 8 test and then you look at the number of eighth graders who then choose not to sit for the Math 8 test, we're looking at, at that point, I think this year, we had 111 students who were expected to sit for the Math 8 test, who opted out of the Math 8 test, which was about 45% of all the kids who should have been taking the Math 8 test, if you follow all my numbers there. It's about a quarter of the total eighth grade population, but it's a pretty significant chunk of the kids that we would have expected to take the Math 8 test. So, you know, we've always reported the data this way, the 24% representing the number of kids who opt out of the Math 8 test compared to the total population of eighth graders that year, knowing that we also have half of our eighth graders who are going to take the algebra exam and not take the Math 8 anyway. So it's, there's a little bit of number sifting that you have to sort through to figure out what that story really is.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, I'll be back next month to share the secondary high school results.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. So next, we have a special education report from Ms. Woods.
Good evening. The Committee on Special Education Recommendations are on the consent agenda this evening. And you also have the first reading of our updated Special Education District Plan. That is our plan that is updated every two years for board approval. This year, we, the updates and the revisions were made in conjunction with the Special Education Advisory Committee as well as the SEPTA Parent Advisory Group.
Thank you. Next, we will have our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ramon. There is not a need for an executive session this evening. A few thank-yous. First is thank you to the Pittsburgh Education Foundation for donating $2,000 to our Pittsburgh Student Opportunity Fund. And actually, thank you Barb. Barb also sits on the Pittsburgh Education Foundation with me, as, as does Jeff. That pledge, after working with Shayna, we thought $4,000 a year is approximately right. So the Education Foundation will also donate another $2,000 in January. And that money goes to any kind of supplies or needs that students shouldn't have to incur when they can't afford it. So it could be anything from eyeglasses to some parts of healthcare, to clothes, to yearbooks, to prom tickets. So that money is, is really used to, to support our kids. I also want to say thank you to PTSA for donating $8,000 for the cultural, to the cultural arts, which is another reason to highlight the super sale, making sure that we're all attending the super sale. That money goes directly to our buildings. It's PTSA's largest fundraiser. It's great. I normally get my kids Halloween costumes there, but they're too old, no. So remember buying a dollhouse there, painting it pink for my dogs, great. Donation of $2,000 from PTSA for Sources of Strength Program at Mendon and Sutherland High Schools, thank you for that. And a donation, another donation from PTSA of $1,695 from Sutherland High School PTSA for an LED stock ticker display sign with live content for the financial classes at Sutherland High School. So thank you. And then last, I just, I, I do want to share a little bit more relative to Board Appreciation Week or Recognition Week. You heard everyone talk about your sense of volunteering and your commitment. I do want to highlight some things that, that this board does not just show up for board meetings. You also attend information exchange, labor relations, legislative and steering meetings. You serve on the Audit Oversight Committee, Teacher Center Committee. You tour our 10 buildings at 7:00 AM, followed by meeting with staff. You are well-read and well-prepared prior to board meetings. And that sometimes ranges between 150 to well over 400 pages of information. Thank you for staying late when we have executive meetings, for attending multiple professional development retreats, including a two-day workshop over the summer and often an additional summer day for retreat and, and tending to professional development. You attend everything. You attend special events like homecoming, the duck drop, musicals, sporting events, classroom visits, candlelight night, and so many others, town, village, school district meetings. Vice President and President of the Board meets with me several times in the morning. You attend graduation, retirements, sports excellence banquets. You attend power hours and other forums. You attend our Unified Sports in bowling and basketball. You visit classrooms to recognize our staff through Honor and Educator. You attend financial training. You attend Saturday morning legislative breakfast. You are present for opening day ceremonies. You meet with stakeholders. You support all different types of service projects. You write articles for your newsletters, our newsletters. You donate funds to staff and students that are in need. On a weekly basis, you attend multiple meetings which take you away from your family. You treat your roles as a full-time job and you are volunteers. You are student-centered and you care deeply for every child's success and well-being. You model citizenship, you model respectful dialogue, and you model goodwill for all. And I thank you and wish you all a wonderful Board of Education Week. Thank you.
Thank you. And so at this point, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Jeff and second, from Kim. So with that, are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed and the motion carries. Is there any old business? Yes. Okay, is there any new business?
Yes. I just wanted to quickly share that our Legislative Zoom Advocacy Day in December for MCSBA, we got it, we had to change the date of that after hearing some information that the Assembly Majority will all be in Albany and in conferences the entire week. We are pushing it back to December 11th. So I just wanted to make sure that was on everyone's radar. We'll have an invitation out for that in the coming weeks. It should be the beginning of November. So just wanted to make sure everyone had that on their radar.
Well, that's normally around 8 till 11.
We'll have two sessions at 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. It'll be an hour and a half for each one.
Thank you so much, Sarah.
Thank you.
And next, we will move to our public comment. And we will start out with Catherine Doyle. Would you please come forward? Would you please come forward?
I don't know if I've ever been first before. Okay, thank you very much. So, okay, I'm here today. He can't click. Do I get extra time?
You do.
I'm going to speak fast then. So I'm here today in support of my colleagues, the teachers, librarians of the Pittsburgh Central School District, in their role to present information that is appropriate for everyone in our community. And with all the book banning talk that's been going around, and hearing about the racy parts of library books being read during public comments, I just want to remind everyone that it's important that we have a library that represents everyone, different colors, different gender expressions. It's important that you can see yourself in the library, and that literature helps us make sense of the world. And the experiences of people in Pittsburgh, you know, we think of ourselves as a nice upper-class community, but we have problems just like everyone else. And some of these kids need help, and these books help kids. And they have uncomfortable truths in them, but life is full of uncomfortable truths, and we need to learn how to deal with them, right? So that's something the library can help us do. So in a recent meeting, someone at the BOSI's level said that Pittsburgh was very sound on this issue, and I'd like you to continue to do that. And thank you, and I appreciate your time today. And I have a minute that I yield up to the universe.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Next, we will have Mr. Kircher come forward, please.
My name's John Kircher. I grew up on Arlington Drive, and I've resided there for 40 years, raised three children. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. I am not vaccinated, but I identify as vaccinated. As of now, my name is not John. It is Joan. That was quite simple. All I had to do was change an H into an A, and suddenly I identify as a she. Now, I'm a grown man. Within the law, unlike a minor child, I can pretty much do anything I want to. If my mother and father, oh, I'm sorry, if my parents had heard me, sorry if I offend anybody by saying mother and father, if my parents had heard me say my last statement, they would have, especially my father, kicked my ass. And if my three children had tried to take a statement like that...
Mr. Kircher.
What?
In public comment, you were supposed to give us some confirmation. You were supposed to state what you will be saying in front of the students today.
Yeah, I decided to change it. Decided to change it.
Well, that's not an option.
Yes, it is.
So we want to...
I just did it. I changed it.
Okay.
If you don't want me to speak next month, I won't. But I can change it, and I'm gonna.
So I would first, before we even make a decision, I want to apologize on behalf of anyone that's listening to this and for our students that are out there. This is why we do ask people to submit their comments first, so that we know...
What are you apologizing for?
I think it was very offensive what you just shared. I think it was offensive to our students.
All we've got to do is walk out of the library, and it would get much worse than that.
I think we should do a call for recess.
Much worse.
Go ahead.
So at this point, Mr. Kircher, we will be calling for a recess. We appreciate your prior comments, and we appreciate the comments that you reported to us.
Do you want to make the motion to go to recess?
Second.
So I can't speak anymore?
Thank you. We thank you for your time and patience, and now we would like to have a motion to resume our meeting. Jeff and Emily. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. So at this point, we would like to resume the meeting with the next person. What I'd like for you all to understand, so what I'd like for you all to understand is that when you decide to engage in public comment, there are boxes to check off, and you agree to the idea that you are writing your statement that will be shared with the public. And so when you go off chart like that, then, you know, it really, we find ourselves in an ill-prepared state and open to comments that may not be shareable with the children of our district. So we're going to move forward.
Obviously, you didn't agree with what I said.
The next person is Michael Shaughnessy, who will be given the floor to speak. Mr. Shaughnessy, are you coming forward to speak?
Mike Shaughnessy, Standish Way. Again, as stated previously, myself and the Pittsburgh community are baffled and continuously appalled at how the PCSD Board of Education can look at themselves in the mirror daily without disappointment in the lack of the most basic approach and support for the children and students of Pittsburgh Central School District community. The multiple comments shared monthly with the Board of Education over the past recent years indicate your culpability in this lack of support, plus the complicit nature of your irresponsible lack of actions to take corrective action when provided the opportunity to do so. Board of Education has decided that limiting comment from the overall district community is justifiable and acceptable. Well, it's not. Last month, I submitted my comments with the understanding that since I was not present, my comments would be read on my behalf. Per the confirmation quote note, "The first 10 residents who submit comments will have the opportunity to read their comment at the meeting, or they may choose to have their comment read on their behalf." We have been advised by the board that they have eliminated the second option based on the 8330 decision, policy changes of the 88-2023 Board of Education meeting. It was a surprise to me, and I'm sure to many others. At the end of the August 8th meeting, Superintendent Perrell challenged the detail presented relative to the current 2022-2023 rankings from Public School Review. In particular, the Monroe County rankings, Pittsburgh-Sutherland is fifth, Pittsburgh-Menden is eighth. Based on Superintendent Perrell's research at the meeting, he stated that U.S. News ranks Pittsburgh Central School District high schools number one without mentioning the same source provided the following. Pittsburgh-Sutherland High School is 310 in the 2022 national rankings. Pittsburgh-Menden is 286 in the 2022 national rankings. In 2012, Menden was ranked nationally 107, Sutherland was ranked number 23. Additional research from NISH ranks Pittsburgh Central School Districts number 19 in the schools districts across New York State, behind Brighton Central School District, which is number 14. The week before last, news radio WHAM 1180 cited another recent poll of the Rochester area school districts, and Brighton Central School District was mentioned as number one in the Rochester area. There was no mention of Pittsburgh Central School District. Overall, this should be and would be a concern to the parents and residents of Pittsburgh. What should be done by the board is to collaborate with an approach with the parents to address this issue of this significant drop in rankings instead of the PCSD focus on SEL plus placing pornographic and transgender-focused books in our school libraries. Together, let's pull this together and the rankings up to number one again and stop settling for a continual decline in rankings.
Thank you. And our final public comment will come from Mr. Skews.
At the past two Board of Education meetings, President Scott told us that the best way to communicate our concerns with the board is by email. I sent an email to each of the board members asking the question, "Why do you want to have obscene books in the Pittsburgh schools?" I received a response from President Scott that was nothing more than a cut-and-paste from the PCSD Policy Manual about Policy 8330. This did not answer my question at all. I resent the question to each of the board members three times over the past month and received no response. So the instruction to email our concerns to the board members as being the best way to communicate with them was obviously disingenuous. I'd still like to know why each of the board members wants to have obscene books in the Pittsburgh schools. We all know that it has nothing to do with inclusion or acceptance. So what is the reason? Each of you is an elected representative of the people of Pittsburgh and has a fiduciary duty to address our concerns. You are not fulfilling your fiduciary duty in any way. So I'll ask the men on the board, what kind of man provides obscene books to children? Men are supposed to be leaders. They're supposed to set an example by which others should live their lives. Each of you is also a father. What kind of father provides obscene books to children? There clearly is something fundamentally wrong with each of you. Men are supposed to be strong, and yet none of you can muster the strength to answer my simple question. Now I'll ask the women on the board, what kind of woman provides obscene books to children? Women bring children into the world and are supposed to nurture them and protect them. Each of you is a mother. Why are you steering our kids down a very dangerous path with these obscene books? Each of you has a fundamental defect. Why are you doing this to our kids, and why are you unwilling to answer my very simple question? If you're proud of your decision to put obscene books in the schools, then why won't you tell us why you're doing it? Tell us the benefit they provide our kids. If you think I'm wrong to object to these obviously obscene books, tell me why. Don't just sit there in silence. Answer the question.
We thank you all for your comments this evening. And with that, is there a motion for adjournment? Sarah, Kim, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, everyone.